We all here? Okay, we are going to, good evening, everyone. I'm going to reconvene our open session. And I don't think we have any actions, but do we have any actions that are reported? Did we take, nope, no reportable actions. Now we'll have an invocation led by trustee Dack and the pledge of allegiance led by trustee Inman.
Since our last meeting, there has been another mass shooting, this time in the state of Texas on the afternoon of May 6th. I'd like to ask for a moment of silence for the eight victims who lost their lives and the seven that were injured due to senseless hate and violence. Thank you.
And now of the pledge, please.
Vigilance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, fun stuff now. We are going to swear in our new student trustee, Caitlin Hitty. Welcome. Where should we do this? Over there? Okay. It's going? Working? Okay, good. We'll wait, let the important people come in. All right. Well, you ready?
Yes.
Okay, please raise your right hand and repeat after me. I state your name.
Hi, Caitlin Hitty.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the state of California.
And the Constitution of the state of California.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
And that I will bear true faith and allegiance to the Constitution of the United States.
And I will bear true faith and allegiance to the Constitution of the United States.
And Constitution of the state of California.
And Constitution of the state of California.
That I take this obligation freely.
That I take this obligation freely.
Without any mental reservation or purpose of evasion.
Without mental reservation or purpose of evasion.
And that I will well and faithfully.
And that I will well and faithfully.
Discharge the duties upon which I am about to enter.
Discharge and honor the duties on which I am about to enter.
Good enough.
Sorry.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Did you want to just take a moment of privilege here? Would you like a photo with her? Okay. All right. No problem. Congratulations. All right. Now, do we have any requests for public comments? No. Okay, we'll go move on to board reports. And I guess there's a request to start over here with trustee Milchick.
It's okay, I didn't make a request, but.
I thought maybe trustee Jay made it, so that's why I looked that way.
Well, I'm talking about two months' worth of activity, so I think I should get four minutes. The chancellor's investiture was lovely, and we're delighted that she has joined us at our district. I attend the Orange County Community College Legislative Task Force every month. And this month, we met with Congresswoman Young Kim, who's our new congresswoman for our district. At IVC, I attended the Iser Town Hall, the play Nine to Five, the year the Student Literary Journal, where the students read their stories that they put in the journal. At Saddleback College, I don't see a time on here.
It's going.
It's going, okay, okay, sorry.
You're losing time. So I wouldn't do that again.
Okay, too late, it's gone, okay. At Saddleback College Job Fair, I attended Saddleback College, I attended the Job Fair, the Student Art Showcase, the art show opening radiant, the nurse pinning, the Women in STEM Panel, the PESOC teach-in, One Book One College, The Nature Fix, Alana Rosenberg's Retirement, the play The Curious Incident of the Dog in the Nighttime, the interior design showcase and celebration, and everything was incredible. I want to give a shout out to Saddleback College's fabulous cabaret production. It took place in the Kit Kat Club in Berlin, where the workers and the customers were partying with wild abandonment, perhaps egged on by the ominous suggestions of the horrors to come, so that so many didn't believe what happened. But the unspeakable horrors did materialize in the devastating denouement of the play. And it was brilliant, courageous, and powerful, and I give them a lot of credit for doing it. At ATEP, we had two ground bakings, the ground bakings for Advantech and the Goddard School. And it's great that ATEP is actually moving wonderfully with four buildings on it. I attended the Tustin City Council meeting and the Laguna City Council meeting when they gave the resolution to the Community College Month. The Orange County Hispanic Dinner. And I spoke to the Saddleback Kiwanis Club in Laguna Woods today. And at both colleges, I attended Coffee with the Board, the Employee Recognition Ceremonies, and the Scholarship Award Ceremonies, which were heartrending and wonderful, and I'm looking forward to commencement. Thanks.
Okay, thank you. Trustee Jay.
The time since the last board meeting has been extremely busy with award presentations, meetings, and the Community College League of California's annual convention. On April 26th, I attended the IVC Foundation Board of Governors meeting. On the next day, I attended the investiture of Juliana Barnes as chancellor of the Orange County Community College District. This ceremony, the purpose of which was to introduce her to the community, was held at IVC. This was a first for the district, and it was an inspiring event. Congratulations, Chancellor Barnes. The Saddleback College Nursing Ceremony, which I attended, was held on May 15th. This was always an inspiring event reflecting the hard work and dedication of nursing students who now begin their careers in service to the community. Congratulations to the 31 new nurses on a job well done. On the morning of May 19th, I was pleased to attend the IVC Scholarship Award Breakfast. $527,800 was awarded. This award included the Dr. William and Barbara J. District Trustee's Endowment Scholarship. That same afternoon, I was at Saddleback College Scholarship Awards Program in which the Dr. William Bill J. Memorial Endowment Scholarship was given. Congratulations to the recipients. What I wanted to talk about was the CCLC Annual Convention held in Monterey on the 5th. One of the sessions concerning the programs allowing colleges to award baccalaureate degrees, three current programs were described. The president of Feather River College in Quincy, California, described their degree offering "an ecosystem restoration in applied fire management." The Moore Park College president briefed us on their program in bio-manufacturing. The president of San Diego City College described their program, their cyber defense and analysis degree program. Although not formally present, Cypress College apparently offers a four-year degree in mortuary science. This is in high demand, and there is a waiting list.
Bobby, trustee Jay.
Okay.
Can you just wrap up, please?
I'm done.
Oh, that was it? Oh, sorry.
Thank you.
All right, trustee Rydell.
Good evening, everyone. I can say I attended everything that you've heard, maybe a few not, but I wanted to specialize in the coffee and tea that we had with the trustees. And here, I thought, well, they get to know us, but I found out that I got to know you. And so let me just, I first went to IVC, and it was wonderful. But before I went to IVC, I did go to a gala at Concordia University. And I sat next to David Mendoza, and he is the grant project manager for the College Corps at IVC. Everyone, take a minute, maybe three minutes, to watch the video that they present. It is absolutely excellent. I did not know we were doing all of that. Back when, way back when, when we did service learning, we did it. But it is even more, more exciting. It's when the students can do about 450 hours, and if they don't get that far, they get $7,000, which will help them with their debt. But if they do 450 hours, they get $10,000. And they were so articulate on the video, I really enjoyed it. And how, check this out, critical thinking they're involved with. They tutor, they work with foods and services, they do marine conservation, more and more and more. Our students are doing that with the community. We talked last month about getting involved in the community. Well, they're doing it better than we are. Then I also met that day, having to do with community, Frank Rivera. He is the manager of outreach services. Obviously, when I hear outreach, that gives my ear. And his team is phenomenal. I applaud all the different services that they give to the students, and I applaud that they consistently do it every day. Then we went to Saddleback, and I have never met so many members of a team, faculty, and classified who genuinely love this campus. I really felt that. They were transparent, they were genuine. Our students are so fortunate to have this faculty and the services that we offer and the classified that give it to them. So thank you.
Thank you. Trustee Inman.
Yes, I was looking the other day at the word trustee and thought, realized, that I'd never exactly realized it before, that the core part of that word is the word trust. And the definition is to rely upon someone. So you can trust these trustees to listen, which I did at the Coffee and Tea with a trustee. And as she said, it was really excellent. And I think it was genuine, and it was trying to improve what's already excellent, but just maybe a few things here and there. You can trust us to help build relationships. I think it's important to build relationships with other colleges in Orange County. And the Concordia College Gala was a form of supporting other colleges. Building relationships with Orange County cities, college, and businesses was part of the reason for the chancellor's investiture. And of course, we got to honor our own new chancellor. It was my honor to be part of the meeting with Congresswoman Young Kim. We went on a tour of the campus, and she was as impressed with Saddleback College as I am. I was happy to continue the relationship which we started in Washington, DC. ATEP is a public-private partnership, as you all know. My first City of Irvine appointment was to the Child Care Committee, and I have had that as a goal for decades. The Goddard School groundbreaking will produce much-needed childcare in this area as well as great opportunities for our students. You can trust me to continue to learn, which I did at the annual trustees conferences. I was interested in two topics, and they had excellent presentations on both of them. That was dual enrollment and DEIA. You can trust us to honor all parts of the SOC community. My favorite event, as most people have said, was the scholarship awards. The powerful student stories were the most moving and reminded us all that we worked so hard for our deserving students. Thank you.
Thank you for that. Trustee Prendergast.
All right. Well, as one of the working class, I was not able to make it to any of that. But it sounds amazing. And thank you for referring to the Coffee and Tea with the trustees. Even though I wasn't there, it's nice to know that we're not discriminating against me anymore. So the one thing I was able to attend was the nurses' pinning ceremony. I've never been able to go in the spring because it's always on a swim meet, but this year, my season was over in time for me to attend, and I'm glad I was. It was, it was very nice. And then I was, got the special surprise. A friend of my daughter's, who she swam with at club swimming and knew all through high school, was getting an award. And so I got to be with him and his parents afterward, and that was always very special. I'm looking forward to commencement. And, you know, good luck to all the students that are finishing up and the professors that are finishing up, helping the students finish up. I know it can be a stressful time of year for both sides, so enjoy that. And other than that, everyone have a good finish to the year.
Thank you. Trustee Dack.
As another member of the working class, I also was not able to join as many of our trustees on some of these events, but I was able to attend a few. I was proud to support our chancellor at her investiture on April 27th, as others had mentioned, and have a renewed excitement working with our fantastic board and chancellor going forward. I was also fortunate enough to attend the CCLC Conference Host in Monterey, May 5th through 7th, with trustee Jay and trustee Inman and trustee, or excuse me, chancellor Barnes. It was a fantastic experience with some fantastic discussions relating to housing and dual enrollment with other trustees in different college districts and executives. I was also happy to attend the first nurses, my first nurses' pinning ceremony. I was very impressed by the story shared, and I can tell that Saddleback's nursing program has a dramatic impact on the students it serves. I'd also like to add that I had a serendipitous meeting with Vice President Rick Maranda on Sunday as I was getting brunch with a friend. We only exchanged a few words, but it's always great seeing our community college team out and about.
Thank you. Yeah, so it's been a whirlwind month for me and also for the district. I think, you know, the investiture, my first one, awesome. Congratulations, Chancellor Barnes. That was really great. And to see all the community members there was fantastic as well. So good job to the team for getting all the community members there. The coffee was great as well. We did it here, I was at the Saddleback one, not at the IVC one. Thought we had really good attendance, good questions. Of course, the groundbreaking mentioned by everybody, nice to see progress at ATEP. And then the two gradu, I mean, sorry, graduation, the two scholarship ceremonies last week, I got to say a few words, so those, those were awesome. Between all that, I did travel to Armenia for 10 days and participated in an international human rights conference. I did get to travel around country to border areas that are under military siege. Talked to a lot of the civilians, saw the shelling by the Azerbaijanis against the civilian population. And what struck me is I spent a lot of time with the students over there, a lot of students, particularly the, well, mostly American University of Armenia students, but other students as well from the other Armenian universities. And what I saw, one, the power of education, two, the thirst for freedom and liberty and rule of law and to live life peacefully. And it was very inspiring to see that over there. I got to moderate a panel at the conference with a known international scholar, Michael Rubin, who works for the American Enterprise Institute. So it was, that part was very inspiring. So the other part's not so inspiring, very sobering, to be in a part of the world when one population wants democracy and the other doesn't, but the other has more military power than the one wants democracy. So difficult situation, but education is the only way forward. So thank you. And so with that, your first report, trustee Hitty.
Thank you.
Student trustee Hitty.
Okay. Good afternoon. My name is Caitlin Hitty. I'm very grateful for the opportunity to be sitting up here today. I'm currently enrolled at Saddleback College as an environmental policy major, and I'm looking forward to a great year. Thank you.
Now, that's a good report. All right. We're now off on to ASG, and I guess we'll start with Angelica from IVC.
All right, hello, trustees. Thank you for having me this evening. Definitely, it's a little bittersweet moment since this is my last report that I'm going to be giving. But I'm going to start off with basically, like, what has been happening this entire month. It's been a mix of emotions, and you can feel it on the campus of both just amazement that this, like, year is, like, coming to an end with all the celebrations happening, and also a lot of stress about all the students, like, you know, experiencing their finals and then just deciding where they're going to go transfer to if they are transferring or kind of preparing for their next year. Definitely, I wanted to highlight some of the celebrations that even I participated in. So the EOPS recognition ceremony, I participated in that, and I was able to see some of my peers, like, give some really moving, like, speeches of basically some of the hardships they've gone through. And for me, like, I know some of these people, and just to look at them, like, just what they experienced to where they are now, it's just, really just tells you a lot about the kinds of students we have on campus. Another event that I also attended as well is the Scholarship Ceremony. I was able to receive some scholarships and also my, like, Diego Victoria, the ASIVC, upcoming ASIVC president, definitely stood up plenty of times if any of you guys were there. So definitely won lots of awards. I also wanted to highlight the College Corp ceremony. I myself am a College Corp fellow. I definitely, it's been a long year. I've definitely, I've done both climate action and food insecurity. I'm still going to be working on my 450 hours, not there yet, but this summer, I'm going to be wrapping it up. And also, just, I wanted to, like, just say, like, just thank you for allowing me to have the opportunity to basically have my student voice out here and continuing allowing us to keep on having our student voices. And now I'm going to be introducing the upcoming ASIVC president formerly. He's a speech and debate champion. He's definitely an exceptional student, and I'm more than happy that I'm going to be handing off the baton to upcoming ASIVC president Diego Victoria. Thank you.
Interesting to introduce the speech debate champion. He doesn't speak, but, well, we'll hear a lot from you in the, in the future. All right. So is there anyone here from Saddleback? Saddleback G S G? No? The finals? Okay. Lame excuse. No, it's all, it's all good. Okay. We're now on to IVC Academic Senate.
Good evening, trustees and chancellor Barnes. This is also my final meeting, so I wanted to start by introducing the Academic Senate, who will be following me, who will be coming forward. First, to my left, seated behind me, is Rebecca Beck, who will be our Academic Senate President, who should be standing up.
Yeah.
Okay, very good. She did.
Rebecca's wonderful. She has served as our Vice President of Equity over the last two years. She's also served as ESL Department Chair and Instructor and has both teaching and administrative experience in her resume from UC Irvine. RJ Dolben will continue on as our Vice President, but will also be taking on a role as Curriculum Chair. Both he and Rebecca will be attending the State Academic Senate Curriculum Institute this summer, and he is a professor in mathematics. Professor Henry Carney is, will be coming in as our VP of Equity. He is a world history instructor and a supporter, a dedicated supporter of our Annapese organizations and students on campus. Professor Summer Surpas is an English instructor. She has worked with the California Acceleration Project, training colleges across the state. I believe she's trained over 50 colleges in that area. And she will be our Chair of our Academic Affairs and Professional Development Committee. And Eric Garcia from Counseling, and he has worked with veterans at IVC specifically, will be our recorder. So we are able to put together a very talented group. I look forward to their service, and I'm very grateful that they were willing to step up. I also wanted to appreciate publicly all of you, Board of Trustees, for accepting your charge during what has often been challenging times. I was thinking back to that period of time, which I can no longer easily identify, and that the years seem to just slide by. And this was before COVID. The most difficult things we were dealing with at that point were electronic locks, sadly enough, to, in response to school shootings. Since that time, you of all dealt with, as trustees, COVID-19, the post-COVID educational reintegration of students, the war in the Ukraine, unrest worldwide, and unfortunately, the continuation of school shootings. I want to thank you so much for your dedication to our faculty and to our colleges and wish you the best in the coming year. Thank you.
Well, I just, I have to say, thank you, Dan, for those really kind and generous and flattering remarks. I think you've always come prepared, you've always been articulate, and I know the board very much appreciates your presence here, and it's going to be missed. All right. Well, I don't have you next. But I, I have Saddleback College Academic Senate, but it says, it's telling me Margot's going to deliver the report, but.
Oh, no.
Okay. That's fine. No, no.
Good evening, Chancellor Barnes, trustees. Congratulations, student trustee Caitlin Hitty. I look forward to working with you, and I'm really excited to see what you bring to this role. This is also my last meeting of the year, and I wanted to take a moment to welcome the incoming Academic Senate President. You know her well. She's one of my mentors, Margot Lovett, and we expect big things from her as well. I'm, we will also be welcoming ESL professor Famiya Scarfoni, EOP counselor Efren Rangel, and Michelle Duffy, reading professor Michelle Duffy into the Academic Executive Team. The Academic Senate Executive Team did a lot of work this semester, and we're really proud of our work. We just finalized our equity-focused value statement, and that will be posted to our Academic Senate website soon. We also, our college offered a lavender pinning ceremony last Friday, and it was a very powerful event. President Stern offered a moving speech that I think really did establish a climate of inclusion that I will remember, you know, as a good moment of this year. Thank you so much for everything that you have taught me over this year. This is my first run. I'm excited to come back in 2024, '25.
So you're still with us, or no?
Yes, I was unclear about that. So Margot's coming into the president role, and then I'm president-elect, and then I'll come back in 2024, '25.
I see. Well, let me, so your presence also has been well-received here, Heidi. Your optimism, and it shows in all of your reports and your enthusiasm for the college is quite evident, so thank you. Okay, now the Faculty Association.
Good evening, everyone. Chancellor, Board of Trustees, administrators, faculty, staff, and the community. This is not my last meeting. You have me for another year. We have a two-year term in our association, so I have a few things tonight. The first I want to say is I really enjoyed this year. It was my first year. I've learned an incredible amount. I believe the learning curve looked like this. And I look forward to learning more in the coming year and over the summer. I want to have a shout out to all the faculty who are working incredibly hard the last few weeks and this week, dedicated to the finals, the end of semester, helping students finish, graduate, and transfer or move on to their next courses. So well done to the faculty. It's such an honor and a privilege to represent them in everything they do. I also went to the Scholarship Ceremony, and I'm very proudly representing the association and the scholarship that we awarded. And it was a really awesome ceremony. I also attended the Coffee and Tea, which was a wonderful opportunity, and I hope we have more like that. I think it was extremely valuable. Finally, I just want to wish everyone a really good end of year. And to those people working, thank you. Thank you to all the faculty and to everyone for all your support all year. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, now we're on to IVC Classified Senate, Desiree Ortiz.
Good evening, chancellor Barnes, trustees. This is not my last meeting. You have me.
You have me for one more. I just wanted to congratulate all of our students in the class of 2023. Angelica, good luck on your next venture and thank you for allowing us to be a part of it. To all the great work that our classified professionals, faculty administrators do every day to get them to that point. Kudos to all of us. To our trustees, thank you for acknowledging the amazing work we do because we do pull all of our heart and soul into it. And I proudly would like to introduce you to my predecessor, which you all know him, but Ace Kagigwa, who is the next incoming Classified Professional Senate President at IVC. You all know him. Be nice to him or he won't take good pictures of you. No, just kidding. Ace will be tremendous for us. So I'm super excited and proud to hand off the baton to him. To all those who I will not be able to say goodbye to next meeting, who won't be here. Thank you so much for allowing me the space and to share with all of you. Thank you.
Thank you very much. All right, next up is Michelle McDougal Jackson, Saddleback College Academic, no, Classified Senate, sorry.
Good evening, Trustees, Chancellor Barnes. You have me for one more year as well, but I did want to acknowledge.
That's going to be like the phrase the rest of.
I did want to acknowledge we held elections Saddleback College Classified Senate and our first ever VP of Equity and Inclusion was elected Chantel Gill. So I wanted to highlight that. We're super excited to be formally doing work in that area and contributing in a meaningful way at the college. We are also going to be including a new Classified Senate Executive Position for the upcoming school year, the role of Caring Campus Liaison. And speaking of caring campus, we will have our official kickoff meeting at Saddleback College on June 29th at 3:30 PM in the McKinney Theater. So save the date. Everyone is invited. We'll go over our 90-day plan and talk about how we all play a part in caring campus. And then we're going to dive right into planning. So we have scheduled our planning retreat for the upcoming school year for July 20th and it will be held at the Crown Valley Community Center. And we're looking forward to another successful year. Thank you.
Thank you. And then, you know, Scott, I'm so used to, I was so used to ending our meetings. So, which was kind of nice, but now you're in the beginning. So Scott Green, CSCA.
Thank you, Mr. President, Chancellor Barnes, Board of Trustees. First of all, I want to welcome Student Trustee Hitty. The fact that you're majoring in environmental program makes me feel very good about the future of the environment. So I appreciate that. Last Wednesday, we had the CSEA Association President, the CSEA Executive Director hold a town hall meeting right here. And it was very informative. It was about the state of CSEA. They had vowed to lobby in Sacramento and meet with Governor Newsom's financial and budget officials to make sure that with the inflation rate still above 4.2, I believe it is, than what it was last year, that they want to try and see if they can keep that 8.2 to budget revised close enough as possible so that we can take care of the people who basically have dealt with this horrible inflation for years. So that was really good to hear. Recently, we just had a graduation ceremony for the Excel Academy, which was a combination of administrators, of classified professionals, of faculty from across this district. It was such a privilege to be able to serve with those folks. And it, I give so much credit to everyone who put that together, but especially Dr. Cindy Viscachill, who set up all the programs, set up the speakers, and it really, really got us to dig deep into our leadership skills. So we appreciate that as well. And finally, we have coming up very soon the CSEA Conference, which is the 98th conference that's held in Reno, Nevada. And we're looking forward to that. There is an upswing with unions across this country. And so this is just another example of democracy at its finest. Thank you.
Thank you for that, Scott. I don't think we have anyone here from the POA, is that right? No? Okay.
Can I just ask a question?
Sure.
Michelle, can you give us that date again?
June 29th.
Thank you.
All right. I don't think we have any board requests for reports, right? Do we? Okay. Now, we know public hearings and now we're on to resolutions. We do have quite a few resolutions, important ones to consider tonight. And I'll turn it over to Trustee Inman.
There are 10 resolutions this evening being submitted to the board this month. The first six honor our outstanding classified staff and managers of the year. To begin, item 6.1 is a resolution for Stephanie Alvarez. A Senior Administrative Assistant for Technology Services is named the 2023 Irvine Valley College Outstanding Classified Employee of the Year. Be it resolved that the Board of Trustees and the Chancellor of the South Orange County Community College District do hereby commend and congratulate Stephanie Alvarez for her outstanding dedication to professionalism and officially recognize her as the 2023 Irvine Valley College Classified Employee of the Year. Can we have a motion, please?
I guess, you didn't move it. Okay, motion from Trustee Milchiker and a second from Trustee Jay.
Yes, and now we vote.
Let's vote on the item. Motion carries on a seven to zero trustee yes vote and a student advisory yes vote. Congratulations, Stephanie. All right.
Item 6.2 is a resolution for Frank Rivera. A Manager of Outreach Services is named the 2023 Irvine Valley College Outstanding Manager of the Year. Be it resolved that the Board of Trustees and the Chancellor of the South Orange County Community College District does hereby commend and congratulate Frank Rivera for his outstanding dedication and professionalism and officially recognize him as the 2023 Irvine Valley College Outstanding Manager of the Year. Can we have a motion?
So moved.
Motion from Trustee Jay and a second from Trustee Rydel. Let's go ahead and vote. Motion carries on a unanimous trustee yes vote, a student trustee yes vote. Congratulations, Frank, 6.3.
6.3 is a resolution for Sandra Kudza. A Lead Charge Nurse in the Student Health Center has been named Saddleback College 2023 Classified Professional of the Year. Therefore, be it resolved that the Board of Trustees and the Chancellor of the South Orange County Community College District do hereby commend and congratulate Sandra Kudza as the 2023 Saddleback College Classified Professional of the Year. May we have a motion?
Second.
Motion from Trustee Milchiker, second from Trustee Jay. Please vote on the item. Motion carries on a unanimous trustee yes vote and a student trustee yes vote. Congratulations, Sandra.
Five is a resolution for Billy Lee. District Payroll System Specialist has been named District Services 2023 Classified Employee of the Year. Therefore, be it resolved that the Board of Trustees and the Chancellor of the South Orange County Community College District do hereby commend and congratulate Billy Lee as the 2023 District Services Classified Employee of the Year. A motion, please?
Second.
The motion from Trustee Milchiker, second from Trustee Jay. Please vote on the item. Resolution is approved by unanimous trustee yes vote and a student trustee yes vote. Congratulations, Billy, 6.6.
6.6 is a resolution for Danielle Heinbach. Director Recruitment and Employment Services has been named the District Services 2023 Manager of the Year. Therefore, be it resolved that the Board of Trustees and the Chancellor of the South Orange County Community College District do hereby commend and congratulate Danielle Heinbach as 2023 District Services Manager of the Year. Motion.
Haven't voted yet. Congratulations. All right. Who, we had a motion? Motion, Trustee Milchiker, second from Trustee Jay. Please vote on the resolution. The resolution carries by a seven to zero trustee yes vote unanimous and a student advisory yes vote. Danielle, congratulations.
Congratulations to Stephanie, Frank, Sandra, Scott, Billy and Danielle for this well-deserved recognition. We thank you for your dedication to our students, our colleges and our district. There are four additional resolutions being submitted to the board for approval this month. Item 6.7 is for a resolution that expresses support for the designation of May 2023 as Mental Health Awareness Month to highlight the critical role of the district and its colleges in providing critical behavioral health services and resources to students and employees. Be it proclaimed that South Orange County Community College District does hereby declare May 2023 as Mental Health Awareness Month and continues its commitment to partner with our community members to ensure that all mental health services are accessible, valuable and culturally appropriate for all SOCCCD stakeholders. Motion?
Second.
Motion, Trustee Milchiker, and a second from Trustee Jay. Please vote on the item. The resolution carries on a seven to zero trustee yes vote and a student advisory yes vote.
Number 6.8. This resolution is to recognize and pay tribute to the contributions of generations of Asian-Americans and Pacific Islanders, AAPI, who have enriched the history of the United States during the month of May. Be it resolved that the South Orange County Community College District Board of Trustees and the Chancellor proclaim May as Asian-American and Pacific Islander Heritage Month. Motion?
So moved.
Motion, Trustee Prendergast? Second, Trustee Rydel. Please vote on the item. Motion carries by unanimous trustee yes vote and a student trustee yes vote. 6.9.
6.9 for International World Hunger Day. Be it resolved that South Orange County Community College District Board of Trustees does hereby recognize May 28th, 2023 as International World Hunger Day and encourages all employees and students to observe the day with appropriate activities and events to bring awareness to hunger across the world. Motion?
So moved.
Second.
Motion from Trustee Jay and I guess I'll give it to Trustee Dak, second. Let's go ahead and vote. Motion carries on a seven to zero trustee yes vote and a student trustee yes vote. The final resolution, 6.10.
6.10 is being submitted to commemorate Lesbian, Gay, Bisexual, Transgender, Queer, Intersex, Asexual Plus Pride Month in the South Orange County Community College District. Whereas SOCCCD celebrates this rich history, acknowledging the contributions of LGBTQIA+ individuals have made and continue to make to strengthen the fabric of American society, its promise of equal rights for all. Now therefore, be it resolved that the South Orange County Community College does hereby proclaim June 2023 as LGBTQIA+ Pride Month. A motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
Motion, Trustee Prendergast, and a second from Trustee Dak. Please vote on the item. Motion carries on a unanimous trustee yes vote and a student trustee yes vote. Moving on to Board of Trustees Chancellor issues 7.0. So we're now on 7.1. Annual approval for student trustee to receive compensation and to make in second motions for board meetings. Do you have a?
Second.
Motion, Trustee Milchiker, second from Trustee Jay. Any questions?
Do you have any question?
Go ahead. Yes, Trustee Inman.
How does a student trustee make a motion? Does she do it in advance with the agenda people or how does this work?
Same way.
Same way.
Say I moved that for a second.
Does it have to be done in advance so it's on the agenda or during?
Just making a motion, second during the session. Just now.
Right. Okay. That's all. Thanks.
Yeah, okay. No, thank you. Any other questions? All right, let's go ahead and vote. The motion carries on.
Point of order.
Yeah.
Were we supposed to do this before?
Yeah.
This needed to be moved up. Well.
No, because she hasn't made her, she hasn't.
I know, but I thought there was something where we had to vote to allow her to actually have a vote.
Well, she was sworn in.
Okay.
Already. And I think this motion just has to do with the comp and the ability to make in second motions. She hasn't made her second emotion yet, but she will be able to subsequent to this.
But I thought there was this procedure where we had to vote to allow her to vote in the past. I know, that's, that's my point. Is I thought in the past, one of the first things we had to do after we swore in was to vote to allow her to have a, have a vote and motion and second.
No?
No? I understand that.
Gets that.
But the idea is, is that you have to vote to allow her to have that advisory vote in the past. We haven't done that tonight, but I'll have to look back at old ones.
You don't think so? Okay.
Anyway.
Well, look into it. But in any event.
It's all good now.
No, no, no.
No, no, no. Maybe on this, well, I guess we already voted, but. No, you're fine. It's just, it's just me foggy brain remembering a procedure that I don't think we care, that we don't think we actually did.
Motion carries, you can now make in second motions. All right. Now, 7.2, Authorization of Payment to Trustee Absent from Board Meeting. Do we need to have a vote on this? Oh, okay. All right. Is there?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, so, oh, I got it back to the, okay. Motion, Trustee Jay, and a second from, is it Trustee Inman? Okay, let's go ahead and vote. Motion carries on a six to zero trustee yes vote, one abstention and a student trustee yes vote. 7.3, Board Policy Revision for Review and Study. Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Motion, Trustee Prendergast?
Second.
Second from Trustee Inman. Do we have any questions on policies for review and study?
No. I wanted to make a comment. Oops, didn't go. There it goes. I really appreciated how it was rewritten that the Chancellor should create a Public Safety Advisory Committee. I very much like that. And so I just wanted to say thank you for those that were involved.
Yeah, we're in the midst of, it's actually new Title V changes that mandate a new policy on police and safety at the district level. So we'll be establishing that and implementing it next year.
Thank you, Chancellor.
All right. So let's go ahead and vote. Motion carries on a seven to zero trustee yes vote and a student trustee yes vote. 7.4, Board Policy Revision for Approval. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Motion from Trustee Jay, second from Trustee Milchiker. Any questions on these policies for approval? No, let's go ahead and vote. The motion carries on a seven to zero trustee yes vote and a student trustee yes vote. We're on to presentations, and I see our presenters are ready to provide us with an accreditation update. And I, um, I guess it's, uh. Tram, you're gonna lead us?
Yes. Good evening, trustees and Chancellor Barnes. I'm here tonight to share with you, along with my colleague, Loris from IVC. Unfortunately, Rick Miranda couldn't join us today because he's at his son's graduation. So Loris will be participating with me in the presentation. So this evening, we're sharing with you for first read our accreditation Iser, which is our self-evaluation report. So just before we go into the report, I wanted to just give a little background. So as you all know, our accreditation really is a process that we go through every seven years in order to ensure equality and ensure that we offer our programs in a manner that is supportive of our students and our mission. And our goal with the process is to really identify areas that we've done really well in and areas that we can continuously improve on. As you know, we, there are four main standards that we go through as part of the self-evaluation process. The first one, talking about our mission, quality and institutional effectiveness. Second, around our student learning programs and services. Third is our resources, and the fourth standard is around our governance structure. So this is a little bit of a timeline of where we've been to get to this point with you tonight. And the main thing I'd like to highlight is this particular process is different than the prior processes we've gone through. We'll be submitting our Iser this summer, the deadline is August 1st. And then there will be a committee convened to review our Iser. They'll come in in the fall semester after they've done their first reading of the report, and we'll do a meet and greet with them in October. And from that meeting, they'll identify if there's any areas of commendations or further information that they'd like from us. And then we'll have from that time until our visit, which is scheduled for sometime in the end of February. And so the visit will convene with only essential folks from the committee, and they will be here to just address any follow-ups or commendations that they'd like to discuss with us. So that's kind of a little bit of a change this time around. And then in June of 2024, we'll have our final action. So with that, I'll go ahead and kick it over to Loris so he can go over the IVC Iser for you.
Thank you and good evening. One favorite question in trainings about the Iser is if a college does not have a mission statement, do they fail standard one, because standard one is all about the mission? And the answer usually is not necessarily, because mission statement is not the mission of the college. And I've highlighted this in this pyramid. The mission statement is just one element, obviously, if you have a mission statement, that's great to kind of summarize the mission. But everything you see here is also the mission of the college. So the strategic plan that we have is also a strong support in what our mission is. How we spend our budget is highlighting our mission, is highlighting our priorities. Which degrees and courses we offer is also type of our mission, depending on what we are focusing on. Even more detailed is student learning outcomes, how do we assess them? What do we want our students to learn? Our individual programs, how we review data, policy review, transparent communications such as websites, catalog, handbooks, and policies. And so this is how you see the entire pyramid is the support of the mission of our colleges, and that is essentially the standard one that we've written about, and I think IVC has a very strong support. We have a very strong mission, and all these lines that you see here do support the mission of IVC. Following standard two goes on instructional programs. IVC has a robust collaboration between faculty, staff, and administration, which has also been in this development of the Iser, has been a very strong collaboration across the entire college. Strong data-informed, equity-minded programs, and we have a very strong program review process as well. Library and learning support is also very mission-driven and equity-minded provisions of student materials, equipment, and services, both online and in person, especially also during the COVID years. Student learning centers are ready for our students and also a strong library. Student support services also revised and has now a very strong program review process to assess and evaluate programs from a success and an equity lens. Strong and effective data collection and implementation of evidence-based framework. I'm sure you've heard of Carrying Campus and Guided Pathways, I think those are truly lift on our campus. Standard three is about human resources, physical resources, technology resources, and financial resources. All those elements adhere to clearly defined policies and regulations and processes. IVC relies heavily on major planning documents such as the technology facilities and strategic plans. These areas also have a continuous program improvement through assessment-focused discussions. Strong professional development, training, and user support, and financial planning, solvency, and clean audits. Lastly, standard four, this is based on decision-making roles and processes, and these are very similar between Saddleback's and IVC's ISRs. Decision-making roles and processes, the college encourages innovation and includes all voices in decision-making processes. The college regularly evaluates decision-making as well. The chief executive officer, in our parlance, that would be our president, maintains planning, budgeting, and alignment with institutional mission, communicates regularly with all constituents inside and outside of the college. The governing board demonstrates responsibility for policies and is committed to ongoing self-evaluation, supports the quality, integrity, and improvement of programs and services at IVC. Since we are in a multi-college district, the chancellor establishes clearly defined roles and authority for responsibility between the colleges and district services, and the district has established resource allocation policies and procedures. And you'll hear a few more on the Saddleback slides, since those are very similar between the two colleges. Lastly, there is a quality focus essay that every college has to submit, and I believe Saddleback has a very similar one, since guided pathways, IVC has been part of the guided pathways movement for quite a few years. Now that funding is slightly changing, we would like to continue on this path, and we would like to integrate guided pathways and institutionalize it. And so we have two projects that the college is committed to, to making guided pathways a truly integrated service, a service for our students.
So I'll go ahead and highlight some areas for Saddleback. So for standard one, what you'll see since our last accreditation visit was that we've really made a switch to becoming much more focused around our outcomes and equity in outcomes. And so you'll notice that as we look at our programs and whether or not they are of quality and effectiveness, we're also starting to disaggregate our data to ensure that we're looking at students by their demographics, background, age, gender, in order to ensure that we're really addressing the needs of all of our students so that they're all able to succeed and access the resources available. With regards to our programs in these areas, we've really done a good job at aligning our plans to ensure that we are looking at them through this lens that we've taken with regards to our mission. And then the last piece of this standard one is that we're really looking at increasing access to information and ensuring that our information is provided in a clear and accurate manner. And so you'll notice we've made some enhancements to our electronic online catalog as well as our website. In standard two, our focus is really around how do we determine that our programs are, are doing well? So we've done assessments and reviews of all of our programs and service areas. We're in 100% compliance with all of our areas. So a couple of things to highlight, we're a leader in ZTC, and as you know, we also have increased our fully online degrees over the last few years. We've, in the library and with our learning support services, along with our student services with COVID, we have enhanced all of our services to be remote access as well, increasing the ability for our students to receive services, not just in person, but online. For standard three, again, this alignment around our mission and the goal of being equity-minded, we're working with our district colleagues around, ensuring that all of our evaluations are done for our staff. And then we're also updating hiring practices to diversify our hiring pools. With regards to our physical and technology resources and financial resources, our goal is to really enhance the resource availability to really meet our goals and our outcomes with regards to equity. And so you'll see that there's a lot of integration with regards to our processes and decision-making with regards to facilities and resources, as well as our budget, to ensure that we're allocating it appropriately. And then for standard four, this is where our role along, at the college level, along with you all at the district and the trustees, it is around decision-making. Couple of things that I want to highlight here is that, again, that integrated planning, not just at the college level, but at the district level as well, really focusing around equity outcomes as well as our success outcomes and partnerships. And then we're looking at our planning and decision-making with the board, redistricting. We felt that that really opened up the opportunity for better community representation, so we really appreciated that in addressing some level of equity and voice representation. And then lastly, as Loris also noted, you know, our integrated planning really helps to highlight our participatory governance and allows all of our participation, both from the college level up to the district level, and as you can see here tonight at our board meeting. And for Saddleback's quality focus essay, we really are focusing on the same thing as IVC. We are hoping to fully integrate our guided pathways framework, and our goal is to eliminate equity gaps and improve the student experience. We truly believe that it's the student experience, if we were able to change it, we can really make a difference on the student's success. You'll notice there's four areas of work for the guided pathways framework. The first one is clarifying the path, entering the path, staying on the path, and ensuring learning. Couple of highlights in those four areas for you. We're focusing on onboarding activities and scheduling for completion. We're helping undeclared students really help to make a decision on where they want to focus on. And then we're creating school teams within our new five schools, as well as engagement activities. And the last pillar, we're focusing on ensuring that students are learning. And in that category, we're going to be spending a lot of time working on learning applications through work experience, research, service learning, and competitions and performances. So that's kind of a summary of all of our, both of our ISRs for you. And then we'll open it up for comments and questions.
All right, thank you both for that presentation. Trustee Prendergast?
Yes, thank you, that was very informative and brief at the same time, we liked that. And I see we have the full reports as well.
Yes.
And, and looking at that, it, it, what is your sense of how much focus you think there will be from the accreditation groups as they are representatives of the state on online learning and implementing that? I know that we've been doing a really good job with that, and so I'm hoping that that's a highlight for us in how we are finding ways to reach more students and, and provide more access. But I'm just curious what, what details you're aware of that might be looking for at the accreditation level?
Yes, we were actually alerted a while back that that is a top priority for our visiting teams to review. At the end of this semester, we'll be collecting up to 50 randomly identified courses online that we'll be sharing with the accreditation team for them to review. They'll be looking for faculty and student interactions on a weekly basis as they review those classes. And it's basically a snapshot of these random 50 classes so they can go in and look at it. So it is top priority for, for, as part of the review. We feel super confident, both Saddleback and IVC, we've done a really good job at transitioning our faculty. We've had a lot of experience doing online prior to COVID, and so we feel that our professional development has been stellar, and our faculty have, both faculty who are full-time as well as part-time have shared with us that, you know, the training we provide has been adequate and has supported them with the transition. So we're pretty confident that we'll be able to show up pretty well and demonstrate that we are leaders in online education like before COVID.
And I also wanted to point out, I like highlighting that we're, the work we're doing with trying to increase diversity in our hiring process, especially with professors that are, you know, facing the students, so the students see someone like them. I think that's a really positive aspect of our report.
Yeah, thanks to our academic senate, along with our presidents and HR, we've been doing really good efforts in looking at our hiring practices and evaluating it and coming up with additional questions to ensure that diversity in hiring.
Trustee Milchker?
I want to thank you, it looks like both colleges are certainly, are on schedule, it looks like. And they both have had town hall meetings, and you both had many, many meetings and set it up. So we've received the draft now, and we'll receive the final draft at the June board meeting. So do you envision that it's going to be changed very much between the May board meeting and the June board meeting? The, the final accreditation for?
We, we actually have already done some level of review at the college level. So we're hoping that really this time will allow you all to read and provide us feedback. And, you know, given any feedback that you share, those would be some edits that we would be making. There are a few items, like for example, today's board agenda will need to be inserted into the report. So there's things like that that will be coming up as we provide additional evidence.
Just to follow up to, unless there are other questions, anyone else? Trustee Milchker's point about the town halls, did you feel that we got a lot of good information and feedback from the town halls?
Yeah, for, I'll share with Saddleback and I'll let Loris talk about IVC. For Saddleback, we did a town hall and we had it open up for a month, and then we also went around to our governance groups to get information. And so I, I felt like everybody had a chance to contribute and support the writing.
I think this year, since we were in a very good schedule, we actually had a very strong participation from all constituency groups. What we did this year is we took out about 20 minutes of many meetings throughout the semester to actually read the Iser instead of, you know, giving people a 200-page report to review. And that has, we've received so much feedback on, hey, this link doesn't work, or maybe add this link or this. So that the, the, the review process throughout the entire spring semester has been very robust. At the town hall, it was more kind of an informational meeting, so we did receive some feedback there, but I think this, the, the in-depth feedback we've received throughout the entire semester. And so also to trustee Milchker's question, I think maybe one or two links will be updated between now and then, and maybe some wording here and there, but I think there is very, very minor changes to be expected between now and June.
All right. Thank you for that, for your presentation. I don't think we have an action item on this, because it's going to, final item will be presented next month. So thank you both.
Thank you.
All righty, so we're now on to our consent calendar items, and as usual, do any trustees want to pull any items? No? All right, wow. Is there a motion to approve the consent calendar?
So moved.
So moved.
Motion trustee Prendergast and a second from trustee J. Let's go ahead and vote. The motion, the consent calendar is approved on a seven to zero trustee yes vote and a student trustee yes vote. We're now on to 10, item 10, Business Services, 10.1, IVC and Saddleback College, California Community College Chancellor's Office, Mathematics, Engineering, Science Achievement. So I think we need, I'm not sure, is this a motion or a discussion? Hmm? Hmm? Okay, motion from trustee Milchek. That's fine. Yep. Yep. So we're accepting the grant? Motion trustee Milchek.
Yep.
What? I, I said, motion from trustee, I'm describing what we would be doing. We would be accepting the grant. Motion trustee Milchek, second from trustee Edman. Did you have a question too? Okay. Okay, let's vote. The motion, the item is approved on a unanimous trustee yes vote and a student trustee yes vote. Now we're on to 10.2, ATEP demolition of the county parcel project. Is there a motion for approval?
So moved.
I second it.
Motion from trustee J, second from trustee Milchek, and a question from trustee Prendergast.
Yeah, I, I mean, I'm not going to get into the weeds of the process, other than it would be nice, we don't have a map or a description of how much is getting, like it's a, there's a general description of unforeseen underground conditions and unforeseen hazmat, but it, I mean, it'd be kind of nice to have a sense of what we're getting bang for our buck here. How many buildings are getting, what's the area, some sort of a map or a description? I'm not seeing that. Sorry to put you on the spot.
So you're, yeah. I know you're filling in. Your standing role, so I think that's for Priya.
I think Met Hani's also here.
Oh, Met Hani's here too.
Thank you for the question, trustee Prendergast, but I think executive director Met Hani will address that question. And as far as I know, that the bid documents itself, within the general conditions and the drawings, the exact mapping of the location was identified, but Met Hani will address more.
But we don't have it. That's, I guess, my problem.
I understand.
Correct. So that was a good question, trustee Prendergast. So we have about, I mean, as you all know, we've demoed the majority of the buildings in the past, but since we took on the county exchange parcel recently, there's about four or five buildings or so, both, obviously both grade, but there is also some kind of below-grade storage that, that's part of the project, so somewhat minimal. But that will complete the demo portion with respects to old Navy buildings at ATEP. We are going to be reimbursed from the county, up to $500,000. So, so that's also a positive with that as well.
So that will be covered.
Yes. Half of it will be covered.
Just a little more
Good point.
Description of it would have been helpful.
Got it.
I'm not going to vote no, but a little more would have been better.
Right. Billy noted.
This, this, oh, sorry.
Do you have a question?
This isn't where, like Goddard School or Advantech or?
No.
No, okay.
No.
Open area right now?
Correct, all in the live.
Okay, great, thank you.
The old buildings that are out there.
All right. Any other questions? Thank you. And Honey? All right, let's go ahead and vote. The item carries on a unanimous trustee yes vote and a student trustee yes vote. We're now on to 10.3, Live Oak Terrace Shade Structure and Site Improvements Project at Irvine Valley College. Do we have a motion?
So moved.
I second it.
Motion from trustee J and a second from trustee Milchek. Any questions on the item?
This won't be finished by commencement, will it? Commencement's on Thursday. Live Oak Terrace is really coming out to be a really nice area, so I think it'll be a good idea to have some shade over it. That's it, thank you.
Agree. All right. Let's vote. All right, motion. The item carries on a unanimous trustee yes vote and a student trustee yes vote. We're now on to human resources, item 11, 11.1, academic employees and academic classified administrator, manager, personnel, actions, and ratifications. Any changes to the item?
No changes, but one readout.
Okay.
Position interim dean of liberal arts for Dr. Jack Beckham. It's extending contract dates July 1, 2023 through July 31, 2023. Range 22, step five, salary 218, 436.
All right. With that readout, do we have a motion? Oh, well, let's, do you have a question? Move it. Motion from trustee Edman.
Can I second it?
Second from trustee Milchek, and then a question from trustee Edman.
My question is simply, oh, thank you. My question is, I was reading about the director of development and alumni relations, and I wondered what was the relation, wait, what, what is the relationship between that person and the foundation people who get funds and so on and so forth?
Good question.
Sure. So the development person is helping out with the general cultivation of potential donors, but the focus of this particular position is something we haven't had before, which is a specific focus on alumni. So creating an alumni database, creating communications between the foundation and alumni, and cultivating those relationships so that we can turn more of our alumni into donors. Some of our most generous donors are alumni of the college, but that's been ad hoc, not intentional. And we want to be more intentional about it.
Okay, that sounds great. Thank you.
It's a good, it's a good idea. It's a good idea.
So this is a college-funded position? Not, it's not foundation-funded?
I have to look at it, trustee Jamal, because as you know, for Saddleback, the foundation pays for approximately half of its employees and the college pays for half. So I don't know if this one is on general fund or foundation. This one is foundation, I am told.
Okay. All right, thank you for that. All right. Good. Any other questions? Okay, I think we have a motion in a second. Let's go ahead and vote. Motion carries on a seven to zero trustee yes vote and a student trustee yes vote, 11.2, classified personnel actions, ratifications.
No changes.
No changes. Okay, do we have a motion in a second for the item?
So moved, but I have one, one thing to say.
Okay, you can.
The only thing is, I like to talk about employee, mention employees that have been retiring after more than 10 years. And Sandra Camarena is a Saddleback employee, senior administrative assistant, who's retiring after 23 years, so thank her for her service to the district. Thanks.
Thank you for that. Okay, so do, did you move the item?
I think I did, didn't I?
Okay, motion from trustee Milchek. Is there a second? Second from trustee Rydel. Any additional questions? No? Let's go ahead and vote. The motion carries on a seven to zero trustee yes vote and a student trustee yes vote. 11.3, destruction of class three disposable records. Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Motion trustee J and a second trustee Milchek. Any questions? All right. Let's go ahead and vote. Motion carries on a seven to zero trustee yes vote. Did you not vote?
It was my understanding that I wasn't voting on human resource.
I think you're right.
Even this item too? Okay. All HR items.
So I'd been abstaining.
Oh, okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right.
Yeah, you're very smart. Very smart. Good, very good.
It is an HR item, but it wasn't a personnel. Well, okay, it kind of is. All right. Okay, 12.0, 12.1, we have no, no items in educational technology services, so we'll move on to 13 information items. If you have any questions or comments, you can interject as I'm going down the list here. 13.1, staff response to public comments from the previous board meeting. Saddleback College and Irvine Valley College speakers. The monthly financial status report. 13.3, 13.4, HERF funds. Monthly summary, 13.5, the basic aid report. 13.6, quarterly investment report. 13.7, the retiree OPEB trust fund. The 13.8, pension stabilization trust fund. 13.9, quarterly financial status report. 13.10, the initial proposal on the mutually agreed reopeners between the district and the faculty association, Article 30. 13.11, initial proposal on the mutually agreed reopeners between the district and the CSEA and chap, in its chapter 586 through Article 8. And then 13.12, initial proposal on mutually agreed reopeners between the district and the POA, Article 6. All right. That gets us through the information items. Now we're off to, on to the written and oral reports from the administration. And I will start off to my right with chancellor Barnes.
All right. Well, very excited to be here at this time, the end of an academic year. And, you know, it's interesting, I don't know about you all, but being in higher education, you know, we have, like, we live by academic year. So it's a really great time, obviously, to look back and to look forward. And for me, it's just been a fabulous first academic year here in SOCCCD. And a big part of the reason why is because of all the people, right? And so obviously, at the end of the year, we heard about all the various events and activities, and I know I went to a nice array of them. And I do, we just want to graduate, congratulate our students with all of the awards that they receive, scholarships and, and beyond, and obviously, all of our employees as well. And it really does take a strong, healthy leadership team to make the world go around in the SOCCCD. So thank you, Dan. Thank you, Heidi, for your, for your great work this year. And I know you're not really going anywhere, but, but thank you for your leadership this year, and we'll look forward to working with Rebecca and with Margot once again. And then, of course, Melanie and Desiree and Michelle, we get to work with you all throughout the year, we continue to work with you all. I didn't, our student, Angelica, had to leave, but here she was just talking about everyone else's accomplishments, and I really wanted to just publicly acknowledge that she's so excited, even through her own trials and tribulations, she's super excited to be able to transfer to UC Riverside. And so she was really boasting about that, so I just want to congratulate her, even though she had to depart probably to go study. So thank you to everyone, and congratulations to all of our students and employees for all of your beautiful recognitions and just all your hard work this year.
Thank you, chancellor. Irvine Valley College president, John Hernandez.
Thank you, board president, Jamal. I also want to extend congratulations to all the classified and the managers of the year, and also send best wishes to our students. I know this is probably a very stressful week, but you'll get through it. And then for those that are graduating, really looking forward to commencement on Thursday. You know, these past couple of weeks have been filled with so many celebratory events, too many to mention, some have already been shared. It's a reminder, again, of the academic cycle that the chancellor just spoke about, and the culmination of recognizing students, whether it is through accomplishments, overcoming barriers. The EOPS Care Cal Works Guardian Scholars Reach for the Star Celebration was incredible. Collectively, those students are graduating and completing 780 degrees and certificates. Our honor ceremony, where each student had an opportunity to go to the podium, to share where they're transferring to, and to say one positive thing that they're taking away from IVC, and that was also very affirming. Our Puente Cohort Two, our transfer celebration, our pride scholars, our scholarship ceremony has, has been shared, where we awarded a record $527,800 to 370 students. And then, of course, appreciate trustee Rydel highlighting the college core program. We had a celebration of the first cohort. And these students can truly take pride in being part of that inaugural cohort. Collectively, to date, they have completed 16,361 service hours at nine local community agencies, and 91% of them are on track to finish their 450 hours. Finally, I want to congratulate Allison Najera, one of 15 PTK members, recognized as a HITE scholar. She was among 2,700 applicants nationwide and has just received several wonderful prestigious awards. This one is one of them with the $10,000 scholarship, a very deserving young lady. Thank you.
Thank you for that, John. Saddleback College president, Elliot Stern.
I want to congratulate student trustee Hitty, and if your parents are still streaming them as well, I know they're very proud. We're very happy to have a Saddleback student on the dais. I want to congratulate our classified employee of the year, Sandra Kudza, and Scott Farthing, our manager of the year. I want to thank for their service Gloria Lee, who worked very hard as a STEM student, as you can imagine, to fulfill her duties as ASG president. We're grateful for that work. I want to thank outgoing academic senate president Heidi Ochoa for bringing in humanity and EQ to the role of president of the academic senate. And of course, to my IVC colleagues, Nandi Relle and Desiree Ortiz as well. Thank you for your work. I want to thank Cindy Viscachill for creating and with her assistance of Deb Garcia, coordinating and making the Excel program happen, our internal leadership program. Many people who I support were visibly impacted by that leadership opportunity. A lot of work went into it, and we're really grateful that it occurred. Finally, I want to thank the board tonight for passing a resolution in honor, in honor of Pride Month. LGBTQ students represent about 10% of our population at Saddleback. LGBTQ youth, LGBTQ, LGBT youth in particular suffer three and a half times the suicide rate of youth of comparable age. Trans youth suffer six times the suicide rate of comparable youth. These are our students, and we love them, and it's important to know that we love them because of who they are, not despite of who they are. So thank you very much for honoring them tonight. That's all.
Thank you.
Thank you for that, Dr. Stern. We now have the, well, you're not the vice chancellor, but executive director of human resources, Kim Wittes. Is that your title now? No?
Tonight, I, whatever you want to call me works. I am the executive director, but no report.
All right. Thank you for that. Now, we're on to the vice chancellor of, I keep looking for Anne Marie, sorry, I'm like business services. It's okay. Priya Jerome, reporting for business services.
I just wanted to thank everyone for the opportunity to be here, but I also wanted to give a shout out to Billy Lee, who was the classified employee from business services. He has a very calm and quiet demeanor, but he's always helpful. So I just want to congratulate him and all the employees of the year who got recognized. Thank you.
Thank you for that. And it looks like, bringing us to the end of the meeting, vice chancellor of educational and technology services.
I have no report at this time.
All right. You got everyone, right? Okay. Well, before we adjourn, hold on a minute. We will now reserve time in the meeting to adjourn in the honor of Saddleback College's Patrick Fennel, a longtime employee of the college who retired in 2011 and passed away in April. Patrick was a full-time theater arts instructor who started at the college in 1979. He chaired the theater department through many changes, and according to Dean Farthing, he directed over 60 productions during his time at Saddleback and taught thousands of acting students. He had a huge impact on the greater community with his innovative and unique productions. Patrick will be missed very much. On behalf of the board of trustees, we extend our deepest condolences to Patrick's family, friends, and former, former colleagues. Thank you and good night.